Okay, members of council, we do have quorum. This meeting is now resumed. Counselor Cressy, please. Thank you. I would like to call upon Mayor Torry to make an announcement.
Well, good morning, Madam Speaker, and good morning, councilors. Let's see now, there we are. Good morning, Madam Speaker, and good morning, councilors. It's an honor for me to stand, I hope, on behalf of us all in the council today to help raise awareness about the importance of organ donation. And I think people have been given on their desks that there's supposed to have been a green ribbon to wear today, and that is because the month of April has been designated as Be a Donor Month in Ontario. And I know that most of us support saving lives through organ and tissue donation, but the fact is that not just this microcosm of the population, but in the population as a whole, only a minority of people have actually taken the step of registering themselves so as to indicate their willingness to be donors. I know in my own case, until a few years ago, I hadn't bothered. In the old days, you merely had to fill out something that was attached to your driver's licence, and I had done that, and then we switched to the permanent driver's licence, and there's no place to fill out a form. But I was on the subway one day and got off at St. Clair, and there was a table there where they were setting up with, they had laptops and so on, to actually register you. Took two minutes, and I did it. Again, I mean, I had it lapsed when my driver's licence went away from being paper. And so I will just confirm what the, you know, material says that comes from the organ donation people, which is that it's very simple to register. And it is something where the shortage of people who've registered causes long waitlists to occur. So today, as we speak, 1,500 people are on the waitlist for a life-saving organ transplant, and 350 of those are from Toronto. So these are our constituents, our residents, 350 of them, and it really doesn't matter. The other ones are all human beings who live with us here in Ontario. And as you know, because I'm sure we all have constituents and friends who go through this, some of them are on dialysis for years, which is not a pleasant experience for them. And, you know, looking at it from the business case standpoint, it's not, it is an investment of considerable resources on the part of the healthcare system to help them. Other people are waiting for new lungs so they can breathe properly again. These are very human stories that relate to people not able to live a full life when, in fact, we can't help them. We can help them. These are like preventable, you know, preventable circumstances these find, these people find themselves in. So every three days, unfortunately, somebody dies waiting for a transplant. There are the heartwarming stories, and I don't know if you read a Canadian press story carried in the Toronto Sun this morning, but again, it was a Toronto story about a gentleman by the name of Mohammed Khan. And there he was, being embraced by a woman by the name of Kelly Bryant, and they were complete strangers from one another. And Mohammed Khan was given a liver transplant by Kelly Bryant, who came forward, and Mr. Khan's wife, I think, as part of their way of saying thank you for this, gave a part of her liver to some other complete stranger. I mean, these are great kind of Toronto-Canadian stories that sort of show that what can be done, but you have to have the willingness to step up and be a donor in order to make that kind of thing happen. So what we really want to do is take all those numbers I referred to before, the waiting list, the people who are having trouble breathing, the people who are on dialysis down as close to zero as we could get by making sure more people become donors. And the way people can register, for those who are watching and for those of us who can help through our platforms that we're given in this job, is to go to www.beadonor.ca. It takes two minutes. They say that it can help save up to eight lives and help as many as 75 other people through the gift of various tissues. And so I would just say that, and one more thing to mention, by the way, one of the reasons why, and these are just such points of pride that I don't think we focus on half enough in this city, the Toronto General Hospital was just named as one of the 10 best hospitals in the world by a very objective survey done, I think, by Newsweek magazine. One of the best 10 hospitals in the world, right here in Toronto. And it's not the only one that would make that list, best 10 cancer centres, best 10 mental health centres, and so on. And one of the reasons they're in that rank of excellence is because of their particular expertise with transplantation. So here we have one of the best places in the world for transplants, but one of the lowest registration rates. And just as a matter of interest, Ontario has a 33% organ registration, organ donation registration rate, Toronto 23%. So Toronto is 10 points behind the provincial average. And I'm just saying, I'm sure on behalf of us all, we can do better, and it would be great if some of you, like me, hadn't got around to doing this, and you could just take, it takes two minutes. And it is something that I think actually could make a big difference to people, and it's leadership that we can show, saying we've done it. So I hope that we'll all wear the green ribbon today and do whatever we can to help them in this cause, which will save a lot of lives. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Counselor Carroll, I understand you also wish to make an announcement.
I do, Madam Speaker. Do you want me to make it at the podium?
Whatever you wish.
Madam Speaker, we have a, we have an interesting thing that has happened in public service. As councillors, we often look at city solicitor Ms. Wahlberg and her staff as, oh, those lawyers, they're always making sure that we are ethical, but they sometimes stand in the way of the things we want to do. And so we, we tend to take them for granted. But in fact, in fact, I had a lawyer friend outside the public service call me recently and say, do you know you have an extraordinary person working away quietly in the city solicitor's office who has just been given a prestigious award by the Law Society? Neil Zangelstadt phoned me, and he said, I, I wouldn't do this other than the fact that I know this is a person who, of extreme humility, who, who will make sure that you never find this out unless I call you. And so I'm so glad that he did. So I want to honour this morning Amanda Ross, who works in Ms. Wahlberg's shop. She has been awarded the Jay Shirley Dennison Award by the Law Society of Ontario, and she's been given it for a really lovely reason. She's being recognised for her longstanding commitment to Toronto's most vulnerable residents. Through her volunteer efforts with the Toronto Lawyers Feed the Hungry Programme, she has volunteered for lawyers and, and has actually made this a very successful organisation. She spearheaded their fundraising programme and designed it in a model such that this is now a very sustained organisation and can do great work for Toronto's most vulnerable. I know that that is near and dear to our hearts. We, we adopt policy and, and fund programmes, hoping that we can do the best, but these efforts are, are what really make so many organisations able to really get through and break through and, and save lives. And so I hope you'll join me this morning in thanking Amanda Ross for her work through Lawyers Feed the Hungry Programme. Thank you.
Counselor Pasternak, I understand you wish to recognise a group in the chambers this morning?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. As the Peer Recognised Music Award, the Grammy, which started with the National Academy of Recording Arts and Sciences, and of course, we all know the origin of the word, it was originally the Gramophone Awards. They're considered to be the highest industry honour among musicians. It was first awarded in 1959. 2019, 22 million people watched the ceremony. This year, an album, decades in the making, was created by Toronto musicians in York Centre, and they received a nomination. The lost songs of World War II by the Yiddish group Yiddish Glory was nominated for Best World Music Album. Led by University of Toronto professor Anna Sternheis, Yiddish Glory resurrects long-lost songs that were thought to have been lost to history until a miraculous discovery at a former Soviet archive in Kiev. Ms. Sternheis, who is here with us today, teamed up with Juno Award-winning vocalist Sophie Millman, and an incredible team of musicians, including Isaac Rosenberg, a student at William Line Mackenzie King in North York, to perform songs originally written during World War II by women, children and refugees. The songs were originally collected by a team during the war, but shortly afterward, that team was arrested during Stalin's anti-Jewish purge, their work was confiscated, and they died thinking it was all lost to history. In fact, it had remained hidden until Ms. Sternheis discovered it in the National Library of the Ukraine. Ms. Sternheis had the choice to submit her name to the Grammy nomination as executive producer of the project, or the names of the musicians, and she decided it's the musicians who deserve the Grammy nod, so she is not officially among the nominees for the award. Please welcome, in our chamber today, Professor Anna Sternheis, creator of Yiddish Glory and leader of the project, Sophie Millman, singer, Isaac Rosenberg, singer, David Bookbinder, trumpet, and David Rosenberg, producer. And they're seated right over there, and we are so proud of their work.
Thank you. So, members of council, we will now review and confirm the order paper. There are 33 items left on the agenda. Council has started but not completed the mayor's second key matter, item EX 4.1, on Toronto's Transit Expansion Programme update and next steps. We will continue that debate as our first item of business today. Yesterday, council decided to consider item PH 4.1, the final report on Don Mills Crossing as the first item this morning. I propose that council consider that item after the mayor's key item. City council will consider member motions at 2:00 PM if the mayor's key matter is completed. Our first item after member's motion will be item CC 6.3, the lobbyist registrar 2018 annual report. I will now take the release of hold. Please put your name under request to question, staff. Deputy Mayor Minin Wong.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. Page five, Members' Motion 6.5, which is my motion. I'm asking council permission to withdraw this motion as city staff have provided me with a briefing note on the impacts, the financial impacts on the carbon tax with the city, and I'd request that that briefing note be circulated to members of council so they know how, how expensive the carbon tax is for the residents of the city of Toronto.
Thank you. So on page five, MM 6.5, Deputy Mayor Minin Wong would like to withdraw. On favour, carried. Counselor Holliday.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. It is a development matter on page...
Page four.
CC 6.6, 45 La Rose Avenue. I have an amendment to put on the screen, and I'd also like to express my thanks to the solicitor and her staff, and the chief planner and his staff for all of their help.
This is on page four, CC 6.6. Counselor Holliday has an amendment. It's on the screen.
May I have a recorded vote?
Recorded vote.
Counselor Carroll, please.
Counselor Matlow, please. Counselor Carroll Janis.
The amendment carries unanimously, 20 in favour.
Item as amended, oh, that was item, okay, thank you. Counselor Wong-Tam.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. On page four, CC 6.4, 1832 Eastern Avenue, 1 Gilets Place and 2 Sackville Street, there is a request for directions report from the city solicitor. I would like to move an amendment to that and thank the city solicitor for his cooperation, Matthew Longall, in drafting this amendment. Essentially, we're setting up a construction site plan working group before, before we finalise the approval of the site plan application.
Okay, so it's on the screen.
The amendment carries unanimously, 20 in favour.
Thank you. Item as amended, on favour, carried. Counselor Rancy.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The bottom of page three, CC 6.1, composition of council's appointments to the Toronto and Region Conservation Authority. I'd like to move an amendment to add to recommendation be with the citizen appointees and add that the majority of the recommending candidates be women.
So you're amending it to the bottom line. Okay, the, this is on page three, CC 6.1, on the amendment. Is everyone okay with the amendment? Okay, so do you want to continue holding it?
I keep holding it.
All right. Counselor Cressy, you have one too. You don't want to release yours? Counselor Layton, convince him. All right, do we have, do we... Counselor Layton.
Yes. Oh, I have a motion to add. Yes, thank you very much. The authorisation of the release of Section 37 funds to community matters related to mural art on Bell utility boxes.
Counselor Matlow.
What did you just do? I just... Oh, okay. Oh, I move this, given that the deadline for the appeal is coming up.
On favour, carried. That's it. Counselor Grimes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have a motion with regards to a piece of property my ward I'm working on now, just to give you a heads-up that that's coming. It's an urgent motion I'm going to be bringing forward.
Okay, thank you. All those in favour of adopting the order paper? On favour, carried. Okay, we will now return to item EX 4.1. If I can ask the staff to put the list on the screen. Counselor Cole to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could have my motion up on the screen, please? This in regards to the provincial transit plan.
Okay, there it is.
One of the major concerns I have...
You have to say, you have to introduce your motion.
Yeah, I'm introducing my motion that city council direct that if there are any provincial transit costs passed on to the city of Toronto as a result of the $17.3 billion gap in the province's transit expansion plans, these costs should be itemised on any future property tax bills as, quotation marks, "the provincial transit plan tax levy". So basically, I'm trying to make it very clear that these transit plans that have been announced are not freebies. They're not going to be built for free. They're going to cost an estimated $28 billion. And I always have this issue, when I go to schools, I say, how many million are there in a billion? You know that almost all the students can't get the right answer. They don't know that there's 1,000 million in a billion, in the general population. So how many thousand billions, millions are we talking about here? And then we've got to make people aware that there's a cost to building these transit lines. Whoever decides on which lines, they're all going to be in the billions of dollars. On top of it, what concerns me is the $1.1 billion cut that's again going to cost the taxpayers of city Toronto. So I think we've got to be upfront with them, and we've got to include this line in future tax bills when it's determined how much they're going to stick us with for building lines in some cases we not agree with. I also want to mention, you know, the context of this is, I was over at Angelina Nacastro's house on Marley and Eggleton the other day, and we're talking about different things, and we're talking about the TDC transit. So her son, Nick Nacastro, pulls out a napkin. He puts a napkin on a piece of paper, says, Mike, listen, you're, all these transit things are all a mistake. I got the right idea, I know what to do with your transit plans. So he gets a napkin, and he says, Mike, can I borrow your pen? So there he goes, on his napkin, he's drawing lines where he should have a circle line here, and this one's got to go up to Rexdale, and what about the people down there in Marie Curtis Park? They need a transit line there, right, Counselor Grimes? So, but this is what we're facing. But this is what we're faced with, is we're having transit plans designed on the run, on back of napkins. And the other thing is, at least the napkin I saw with my own eyes, but these plans are very secretive. I mean, to this day, we still refuse, or they still refuse to tell us the magic technology that's going to be used on our most important relief line, a $10.9 billion line. What is it? We're not telling you. How can we even take this seriously when we get this $10.9 billion line that's going to be critical of the future of Toronto, and they don't even know or won't tell us the technology? And we've heard so many versions, it's going to be Maglev, it's going to be Mini Metro, it's going to be submarines, whatever it is. Every day, there's a new guess of what this $10.9 billion expenditure is going to be and trying to get it through the drawn river. Anyways, I just wanted to say, we've got to really be on our toes here because as much as we've got to remind ourselves, this is good news that we're talking about transit investment, and it's great that the premier is so interested in it, and I think that is something to welcome. There is interest, obviously, in transit at Queen's Park. And I just want to make sure that we look at the big picture, and I know we get frustrated with Mayor Tory sometimes, we get frustrated with Chris Murray, our general manager, but they're in a very untenable situation where they're trying to be reasonable, they're trying to ask the right questions. It is not easy, and sometimes we express our frustration with our lead on this, but they have an incredibly tough job. I just also want to mention, you know, sometimes, you know, we forget that this is about the people of Toronto's transit. They paid for it, they built it. Their future plans are going to run right through their neighborhoods for 10, 15 years of construction, mining, bulldozing, for 10, 15... So if you think, "Wow, I'm going to get a subway near me," just ask me about the Eglinson Crosstown, 12 years of hell we've gone through, and this is going to go right through the middle of the city, through the Don Valley.
Thank you, Counselor Cole. Thank you. We do have questions for you. Counselor Holliday, three minutes.
Thank you. Through to Counselor Cole, it was mentioned that this is Toronto's transit plan. I take note that some of the transit is regional in nature, and it crosses into, you know, Mississauga Peel, up into Vaughan, Richmond Hill. I wondered through to the councillor if he would also find it acceptable if those municipalities put a levy on their bill that says Toronto's Transit Plan, and how the residents in those municipalities might perceive, you know, the regional concept of this, and if we do this, would they do that, and would that be okay?
Well, it is in Toronto's Transit Plan that we're discussing here. We're discussing the province of Ontario's four major priorities that were picked out by the province, by the mysterious Mr. Lindsay. So it's his plan that we're trying to figure out the impact of. So it's not Toronto's plan. Parts of it are Toronto's, but basically, it belongs to Mr. Lindsay, the mysterious Mr. Lindsay.
I wonder, Madam Speaker, if I could answer the question, if it would be acceptable if the other municipalities...
Okay, Counselor Cole, just say yes or no.
Yes and no.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Deputy Mayor Minin Wong.
Yes, thank you. Can you put the motion up on the screen? So you believe that the costs of the implications, all these costs, should be itemized on the tax bill? Is that correct?
I believe if there are parts of these $17.3 billion that's supposed to be picked up by municipalities, like Toronto, which will bear the brunt of it, we should let the people of Toronto know what part of that is a result of the province's unwilling to put the $17.3 billion in their budget, and they put it into our budget. So I think the public has a right to know how much they're paying for.
Okay, so the public has a right to know what these additional costs are. Given that, can you tell me how much it's going to cost to put this on the tax bill, if you're so concerned? How much is it going to cost?
Well, I think it's pretty easy to just add another line on a tax bill with the computer digital technology we have. It's not going to have to do it manually.
So you haven't calculated the costs?
I think it might be a lot less than the $17.3 billion we're asked to pay for.
Oh, so you want one set of costs itemized, yet you don't know the other costs?
I think there's a big difference...
Thank you.
... between a line item on a tax bill and $17.3 billion unaccounted for by the province of Ontario that we may have to pick up.
Thank you, thank you. Counselor Wong Tam, clarification.
Yes, thank you very much, Counselor Cole. Your motion is really to provide greater transparency to the taxpayers of Toronto. Is that correct?
Yes, because many taxpayers have been told in previous years that these subway lines were going to be free, that there was no cost to them, and someone else is paying. So that's why I think it's important to be transparent with people that there is a cost.
And even if the $17.3 billion is somehow adjusted downward because Vaughan may pick up a piece, or Mississauga may pick up a piece, it's still important, in your opinion, and this is by way of your motion, to ensure that taxpayers fully understand where their tax dollars are going to. Is that correct?
Exactly. And how much these transit projects, which everybody loves until they see the sticker price, they should know what it costs. And to see it on a tax bill might make people realize, we all want transit, we need it, but there's a huge multi-billion dollar cost to it. And I think, as you said, councillor, for transparency's sake, we've got to be straight with people and say, "This new plan, which is great to see all these announcements, but you're going to be picking up the bill. The people of Toronto will be paying for it in their taxes for the next 20, 30 years."
And just my final question. There has been a precedent set before City Council where we've itemized this very special tax levy and credited to such, whether it's the City Building Fund or the Scarborough Extension Fund. This is not the first time we've done this.
Okay, thank you.
Is that correct?
Yes, and again, there is precedent for it, and I think that people have a right to know what the cost is going to be picked up on their tax bill.
Thank you. Counselor Layton.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I had a motion, but thanks to Counselor Robinson, it's not necessary anymore, and that was that we state quite firmly to the provincial government that we are opposed to the change in what was arranged with the gas tax financing to help pay for our state of good repair. And I'll get into that a bit in a second. I'll also be supportive of the mayor's motion, much like my colleague, Counselor Perks. I think it provides clarity in that the city is not endorsing in any way the province's proposed changes to Toronto's Transit Plan. I'll also be supportive of Counselor Matlow's motion. I'll say just quite, very quickly, that we haven't issued the RFP yet for this project, and if there is an opportunity for us to return to an expert-driven plan rather than continue down this political, very politicized plan for public transit in Toronto, it's now. I do realize, though, this door is closing, this window is closing, and that it may be, in fact, the last vote that I cast against moving ahead with our current transit plans. Finally, I'll also be supportive of Counselor Cole's motion, because I think it's important for us to demonstrate this Doug Ford tax to the residents of Toronto who won't understand it, because really what they're doing is, the province is picking our pocket here. They committed this money to fund state of good repair for public transit, something we've been fighting for years, and now they're backing out of that. And it's going to cost Toronto residents. It's going to now be on the backs of Toronto residents, despite the fact that those aren't the only individuals who benefit from a strong public transit system in Toronto. Everybody benefits. Everyone in the GTA benefits from this because it allows the commerce, the economic engine that is the city of Toronto to function properly and to have its arteries moving people around quickly and efficiently. Look, all of these recommendations and this entire debate hinges and rests on one simple assumption that is false. We hear about people talking about good faith, going to the table in good faith, going to this discussion in a very rational way, but we're not working with a rational actor. Like, we're discussing in good faith, but they're not. The province is not rational or thoughtful in this. They're not driven by fact in any form or fashion. We have seen what the premier can do. He's devoid of fact in not only a transit debate, but just about every debate that they have at Queen's Park. His claims are as much a bumper sticker than actual public policy, and he was central to canceling and destroying transit in the city the first time and delaying the advancement of transit in Scarborough that would be opening this year. He was intimately involved with that, and now he's doing it again. And much, much worse, he's actually now going to be responsible for further delays with our state of good repair. There was a report in The Star just earlier today about why that January slowdown, one of the worst delays in history, was caused, and it was caused by maintenance. And you know what? That's going to get worse, because we've got this billions, tens of billions in backlog, and we don't have anything to pay for it. So he's just announced, not only is he going to delay transit expansion in the city of Toronto, but he's actually going to break the system we have. And yet, we're going back to this table, and we're saying in good faith, we're going to keep having this negotiation. And at the same time, he's working to destroy it. Now, you don't go into a negotiation, and if the other side just keeps spouting half-truths and not telling you the full story, do you continue to sit there? Do you continue to take it? If you're sitting at the table, and you're being dealt cards over and over again, and it's always a losing hand, well, you got to know when to fold them. You got to know when to walk away, and you got to know when to run. Thank you.
Okay, there's no singing in the council chambers. Counselor Fletcher, you're up. Counselor Fletcher. Counselor McElvee.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yesterday morning, I spoke about the over 500 residents that have contacted my office by email and petition to express their support for the Eglinson East LRT to Malvern. Last week, I attended a town hall held by Scarborough Transit Action with Mayor Tory and Liberal MPP Mitzi Hunter for Scarborough Guildwood. This meeting was attended by over 200 residents that expressed overwhelming support for this vital investment in infrastructure in Scarborough. If you won't listen to me about the importance of this project, then perhaps you should listen and read the submissions to the mayor's executive last week from key stakeholders, including the University of Toronto, Centennial College, Scarborough Hospital, Renew Scarborough, the Scarborough Campus Students Union, Scarborough Community Action Network, and numerous other local community associations. Scarborough isn't fighting Scarborough. We are united. We are all calling for this project to go to Malvern. Our residents recognize that the Eglinson East LRT will provide us with less time on the bus and more time with our families. I was extremely disappointed that yesterday, Counselor Matlow, who claims to want more transit for Scarborough, put forth a motion that would only see the Eglinson East LRT constructed to the UTSC. This is counter to the mayor's executive meeting last week and City Council's 2018 decision to build the LRT to Malvern. I can't believe that Counselor Matlow, who is swimming in subway stops, streetcar stops, and soon LRT stops, is picking on the transit-thirsty community of Malvern. Counselor Matlow, Malvern residents spend way too much time on the bus and out in the cold. Scarborough residents are losing hope. City Council needs to signal to Malvern and to the other priority neighborhoods in Scarborough that they matter. I encourage you to vote no to Counselor Matlow's motion so that the city can continue with the planning, design, and engineering of the Eglinson East LRT fully to Malvern. Let's tell the residents north of the 401 that they matter too.
Counselor Carol Janis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Appreciate the opportunity to weigh in on this subject. For years and years and years, we've been talking about transit. For years and years and years, we've been debating transit. Unfortunately, last time we built anything in Scarborough was in 1978. In the early 90s, we had a subway extension along Shepherd, and it miraculously stopped at Don Mills. And the people of Scarborough Age Court, people of Scarborough North, and all the residents north of the 401 are looking for that to be extended and to come into Scarborough. Madam Speaker, we have something like 20,000 doors coming between Victoria Park and Shepherd, all the way out to Midland and Shepherd in my ward, and there's a couple of more thousand in Counselor Carol's ward, just at Victoria Park and Shepherd. And those people need transit, and those people need to come downtown quickly. When I was just elected, a school came to my ward, and I still have it on my door down at my office, and it says, "It took us one hour and 15 minutes to come from Scarborough to City Hall, and we demand faster traffic." Now, those were grade eights. Now, those grade eights right now are about to finish high school, and they probably will wait until their children are born before they see anything happening in the north part of Scarborough. It looks like the north part of Scarborough is designated as a second-class citizens area that they live. And I hear my fellow councillors say, "You don't need a subway out there. You can get an LRT." And I hear my colleague beside me saying, "We don't need subways in Scarborough." I disagree. You know, you've got a lot of subway stops, as my colleague said, but I'm not going to pick on you today. It's not a day that we pick on Counselor Matlow. What I am asking for, and what I am saying to you folks, is we need to make sure that we have a transit plan. The one-stop subway that I supported from Kennedy and Eglinson out to Scarborough Civic Centre, the mayor referred to it yesterday, there was going to be a Mecca. And this is going to be a Mecca that was going to be built at Scarborough Civic Centre just behind there at Scarborough Town Centre. That's about 20,000 doors. Well, I have to tell you, there's 20,000 doors coming fast and furious along Shepherd. Shepherd is going to be the new young street of Scarborough. And if we do not provide for it a subway and eventually join the relief line that the premier says is going to stop at Eglinson and Don Mills, take it all the way up either to Don Mills or around Victoria Park, if we don't do that, we're not going to have a complete circle. People that would be going on one-stop subway or the three stops that the premier is now talking about to Scarborough Centre, they shouldn't be just stopping there. There should be a loop that they can come around. And I've heard from my good friend, Counselor Pasternak, he says, "What about extending the subway west on Shepherd to Dufford?" Well, or Don's view. I think that should be a priority, and I think we should look at having a subway that will run right across the north part of Scarborough, right across the north part of the city that would eventually end up at the hub that we're all talking about at the airport. If you want to go to the airport right now, and you live in my part of the world or in Scarborough North in Counselor Layton's ward, you'll have to come downtown if you want to take transit. You're going to have to come downtown and from here, grab the UP in order to go out to the airport. The other option that you have is to take PTC or to take a taxi cab. Well, if you live downtown and you're south of Bluer Street or on Bluer Street, you can certainly take public transportation to go to the airport. If you live above that, you can certainly do, until Eglinson, you could probably do something. But north of Eglinson, there's not very much. I see the city divided as Lakeshore to Bluer, Bluer to Eglinson, Eglinson to the 401, and God help you if you live north of 401 and east of Victoria Park. God help you if you live in Scarborough, north of the 401. Nobody seems to care. It's an area that's totally been forgotten. It's about time that we stop using my residents and the residents of... It's about time that we stop using my residents and the residents of Councillor Ly and part of the residents of Councillor McElvee, make sure that they also get what they pay for. We contribute to the tax base. We contribute to what is called Toronto. But unfortunately, it seems that Toronto has forgotten the people north of the 401 and east of Victoria Park. That's a real shame. It's a real shame that our residents get treated differently. So I say to you folks, when you look at getting votes, when you look at a tax base, you do not forget those residents. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Councillor Carroll.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I feel like I have to speak to explain why I'm going to vote in what will seem like two different directions. I will be supporting Councillor Matlow's motion, and I know it won't pass. And then I will be supporting Mayor Tory's motion, because we need him to go in the strongest possible position to Queen's Park. There's no doubt about that. But why will I be voting for Councillor Matlow's motion? Well, I made a promise years ago, standing on the steps of Centennial College in Scarborough. I made a promise to students there who were learning for the first time the night before they were going to lose a station right at their front door in the Transit City Line, the Scarborough LRT. They were just learning. I don't know why the MPP and the local councillor hadn't told them that they were getting that, but they didn't know. And I told them tomorrow morning, you're going to lose it. And they were very upset, and I promised them that I would never vote in favor of losing that, and that if there was ever an opportunity in this chamber to vote to save that line, because the cost of that line, fully funded by the province, meant that we could go to Malvern. That students at Leicester Beat Pearson, students at Mother Teresa would have real post-secondary opportunity, because we would be funding the line in such a way that we would be able to afford to build an entire transit grid throughout Scarborough, and that I would always vote any time that opportunity arose. But I'm pragmatic. I know that at the end of the day, these 25 councillors, we've heard the speeches, the old trope that we don't care about Scarborough if we represent somewhere else. But I do care. I've got a grandson, who's only 12, but he's huge. He looks older beyond his years, and thanks to Mayor Tory, he can ride transit free for another few months. And he generally takes the bus to basketball practices. But I've got to go every Thursday night out to pick him up at Leicester Beat Pearson, because that's a bus ride that's too much to ask of a 12-year-old. I have to go again on Saturday morning to Mother Teresa, because his little brother's practice is a little bit too much to ask on Saturday morning for mom to get up and be there at 8:30 if she's going to take transit. And so I'm back and forth to Malvern, because, you know, at the end of the day, it's about cars. We pick up a player who lives on, I think it's Derby Court or Denby Court, who's pretty close to Mother Teresa, but we pick him up because cars whip around there so much, because there isn't a lot of transit opportunity, that his mom's not even sure that he's safe walking over to MT. So we go and pick him up on the way. I know what they need, and I care about it. Heck, my family lives in Scarborough. I know what they need. A lot of them are seniors. My sister's a senior citizen. She's my older sister. But she knows that if we built that LRT grid, she'd go to short walk to her next stop. That's not the case with subways. It's not always a short walk to the next station when it's a subway. What they need are short walks and a real grid of transit. And we cared so much about them that we designed one. And so I promised that any time I had an opportunity to support that, I would. But I do want Mayor Tory to be able to go to Queen's Park with a solid position. So, you know, I will be joining you after I have supported Councillor Matlow's motion. But Madam Speaker, know this. We all need to know this. At the end of the day, we have to stop accusing each other of not caring about Toronto's residents wherever they live. We should be rising on a point of privilege every time someone does that. We make citywide decisions in here every day, because all 25 of us care about Toronto's residents. I'm not sure. I'm not sure why I stop myself, except that it jams up the works and the proceedings here. But I should be standing on a point of privilege every time Councillor Karagianis accuses those who, because they don't represent a ward in Scarborough, they don't care about Scarborough. It's ludicrous. It's ludicrous to keep saying that, year after year after year. It was Councillor Kelly before you, and it goes on and on and on. And that's just one of the lies we tell residents of Scarborough. It's just not true. I've never accused anyone here of not giving a damn about North York, because I know that all 25 people in here go through what they go to get elected, because they care about this city.
Thank you.
And everyone in it.
Thank you. Councillor Ly.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As a new councillor here, I've seen from the outside, and now I'm in the inside, and I can't echo more with Councillor Karagianis and Councillor McElvee what they are expressing about Scarborough. I promised my residents that I will stand up for Scarborough. I promised my residents that I'll put Scarborough back on the map. And now Scarborough, the transit plan of Scarborough is back on the transit map, which I'm, just like a dream come true. I have heard here that some of my colleagues say that Scarborough's for rich people, that they don't need any transit, and therefore better people, that they don't really need transit. I don't agree. In the 1970s, I commuted from north Scarborough to come down to downtown to work, and I've been there, and I know how it is to have such a long commute time. And I think Scarborough deserves better, and I can't echo more with what Councillor Karagianis and Councillor McElvee's stand for Scarborough. And for the, I cannot support Councillor Matlow's motion, because I wanted the subway to go to Melvyn Town Centre or whatever transit goes to the Melvyn Town Centre, because it's very important for the people there that don't have any transit. And one stop is going to be very important, because we need to build integrated transit. We need to connect eventually from that up to Shepherd.
Okay, I'm sorry, Councillor Ly. Can I have some quiet, please? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I've been interviewed by Fairchild TV last couple of days, and I told them I immigrated to Canada, to Toronto, my home, in 1972. And at that time, I immigrated from Hong Kong. There was no subway in Hong Kong. And now, 45 years later, the subway in Hong Kong is just like a web, where Toronto has been just like, they just built a few stops. And I think it's very, very important that we build transit. Someone is building transit now. We don't know how it is, but if someone is building transit, I would always be supporting transit building built in Toronto. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Cressy.
Thank you, Speaker. And I'll begin by placing a motion, which I believe is a friendly amendment to the mayor's. And this is very specifically confirmation from staff when they report back in June that there will be no unreasonable delay to, and I list, all of our current transit expansion plans. Let me begin my remarks, first of all, by thanking our City of Toronto staff. It is not easy when you conduct five years, and on some lines, longer, but five years of work to do the hard work of developing a transit expansion program, only to have a press conference arrive and a brand-new map put in front of you, and then a request to report on that within a matter of days. And so, for staff, I want to thank them. Announcing transit is easy. Building transit is hard. And so, if there's one message Torontonians have said to me in my five years here, is that they are sick and tired of Torontonian, or of politicians, drawing a new transit map after every election. So, and Councillor Ainsley, if I can have the overhead, I want to walk through this just very briefly in terms of some recent history over the last 13 years. If I can have the overhead, please. I'll go back. Do we have? I'll go back on the overhead.
Are you paying him to do this?
Can I? Can you hold the time, Speaker? There we go. We'll start in 2007. So if I go back 13 years, we had a plan with the light rail across the city. Currently, Eglington is under construction, and we should be going out to the Tender Unfinned shortly, and we've brought back plans for waterfront and Eglington East. If I can go to the next map. Then we had 2010, and it was the campaign from former Mayor Rob Ford. I'll call this "Subways, Subways, Subways, All for Free," and that was promised in 2010. Nothing was built, if we can move on. Then we had then Mayor Ford. Again, this is what I will call "Subways, Subways, Subways 2.0." Nothing was built. In fact, everything was delayed. Let's carry on. Then we proceed to the election in 2014 and SmartTrack. We were told 22 stops with no tax dollars spent on any of them. We have six stops, and we are using tax dollars for it, but they are being built. If I can go to the next map. Then we proceed to 2016. This was at council, the Peace in the Valley motion, whereby, instead of three stops, we would have one stop on the subway and an LRT as well, for the price altogether. It turned out, we only had enough money for the one-stop subway, and the LRT was lost. Go to the next map. Then we had the city council plan that we were supposed to be debating today. And the city council plan with our PTIF funding was the one-stop subway, the six SmartTrack stops, alleviating congestion at Young and Blour, and initiating work on the DRL with next year us-determined prioritization for waterfront and Eglington LRTs. If I can go to the next map. Then we had a press conference a week ago announcing "Subways, Subways, Subways 4.0." We are right back to 2010, when the same commitment was made and nothing was done. You can get rid of the maps now, Councillor Ainsley. So if I could say one thing, it would be enough is enough. Enough of the politicians not coming up with transit plans, because that actually takes work, but drawing transit maps. I submit that just like in 2010, when then Councillor Ford promised Subway, Subway, Subways, and just like in 2012, when then Councillor Ford promised Subway, Subway, Subways, that none of these will ever get built. But it's worse than simply delaying transit. This province is cutting the budget for repairs, so there's less money to actually make transit arrive on time. This is a vicious cycle by design. The province breaks the TTC by not funding the TTC. They then propose to upload the TTC to fix the system that they broke. And so for the largest city in this country, for the economic engine of this province, we cannot operate when we are treated like just another provincial department. In nine months, this government has cut council in half. They have cut $1.1 billion from our capital repairs budget, and now, without any consultation, they've provided yet another map. I cannot operate under these conditions, nor should we, and in June, if there is any further delay...
Thank you.
We stop.
Thank you. Questions? Councillor Pasternak, clarification of the amendment.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you to Councillor Cressy. In your motion, you've said, you've mentioned here line two one-stop extension, where in fact, the report before us is referencing on page three, a, supporting a three-stop line-two extension. Which do you support? Do you want to go back to the one-stop, or are you supporting what's before us, the three-stop?
So, as a point of clarification, our city manager stated very clearly yesterday that there is no recommendation in front of us to support a three-stop. In fact, what our city staff report says very clearly, and was reinforced by the city manager, is that we are going to assess that and come back. There is no recommendation in front of us to support the three-stop. What my motion says very clearly is that for Toronto's current transit expansion plans, that include the following: SmartTrack, six stops, the one-stop extension, the overcrowding at Young and Blour, and the DRL. If in the assessment, they come back and say, "This will delay those projects," we need to know in June. That is what this says.
The, okay, the province has made it clear they want to have it as three-stop extension. Are you saying that that's a nonstarter, that we want to stick with the one-stop? I don't know.
So let me be very clear. Last week, there was a press conference where, without any study and without any consultation, new lines were drawn on a map. In the staff report in front of us are 61 questions about that press conference. Those 61 questions are the basis of transportation planning. So what we have in front of us, from a press conference, is a map. We don't have a transit plan. And so my motion, building on the staff recommendations, is to ensure that if this transit map delays our actual expansion of the transit plan, that we should know about it.
So if going to three delays it, we wouldn't support it?
Absolutely. If going to three means that Scarborough residents are going to have to wait further for transit expansion, then we need to know that. And I would hope that in the interest of actually moving residents in Scarborough, that you would want to know whether we were going to cause them further undue delays as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Karagianis, clarification.
Clarification of the motion, Speaker, and I want to thank my colleague for putting up all those maps. He did say about SmartTrack, and he said that we're building it. Can you tell me what station we're putting shovels in the ground?
That's not clarification of the motion.
Well, he put the motion forward. I'm just wondering.
No, that's not on our plan.
You're welcome. That's clarification of the motion. Do you have any?
The clarification of the motion is the clarification of what you see.
I'm fine, Madam Speaker, and thank you for picking on me.
Councillor Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
I'm not even going to go there.
Sorry, you can go there all you want. You just get me real elected.
It's not worth it. It's not worth it.
Tell you what's not worth it. It's that peace in the land, please.
Yeah. He's not worth it, trust me.
I beg your pardon, Madam Speaker. Point of order. Point of order. Personal privilege. Point of personal privilege.
Get them both.
Yes.
How dare you say I'm not worth it? I demand an apology.
Just...
Okay. All right. All right. Yes, yes, yes.
Your apology?
Yes, yes. Yeah, why not? Okay. Councillor Holliday, clarification of the motion.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I just wondered if I could ask the, through you to Councillor Cressy, to define unreasonable delay, in particular in the context of Eglington, because one of the proposals was to underground Eglington Avenue. We had heard from staff that it would take longer to build Eglington because it's underground, and I wanted to know if that meant unreasonable or a delay even in the eyes of the councillor.
Well, from my vantage point, I need our staff to report on what the delay may be. That is something we don't as of yet know, and those are some of the questions that staff have posed. And then it will be for council to determine whether that is unreasonable.
Thank you.
You're right.
Councillor Fletcher to speak. Yes, Speaker. I am going to support Councillor Cressy's motion and what he had up as a plan. And I know that when the camera comes on me, we can now see that plan again. I also want to thank the staff who I've worked with for years on getting the environmental assessment approved for the relief line south and starting our work on relief line north, which is now part of my new ward, thanks to the provincial government. I know they put a lot of hard work in that, and it's not, it's not been easy. But we did have a plan in 2007. It's been changed many times. And I just thank Councillor Cressy for actually showing us what we say is our, our transit plan. Because I don't think the public realizes that though it seems messy, we actually do have a transit plan. We might not all of us agree with all the aspects of that. Some people don't agree with SmartTrack. Some people don't agree with the Scarborough extension. Some people are a little iffy on maybe the relief line, if that's going to work, and waterfront east and west, and Eglington east and west. We're pretty united on those, but there are some differences. But now's the time not to focus on our differences. The time is to agree that we actually do have a plan and to find out how it gets tested on what the provincial government has put forward. So... So just on the question about, well, do we, what do we do? Three stops, two stops? We have a SmartTrack station at Lawrence. The same place you would put a station on the Scarborough subway extension. Do we need that?
Different location.
Maybe it's different, but do we need, how does SmartTrack impact any of the stations? That's an important question. We are committed to SmartTrack. We have the money for SmartTrack. We have the money for all of those stations. We have the plan. Now we're negotiating with the provincial government, councillor Karagianis, to be the developer of those stations. They have put their stations out for private development. We have our stations, which we've always planned to pay for. So we could proceed with those as soon as we get the green light. As far as the relief line is concerned, I'm very interested to know everything about their plan, which is how will the new trains run? What do we need to do with the environmental assessment? How will they be changing the environmental assessment to go across the Don River rather than under the Don River? How do you get across the 500 meters at Laird Bridge? All of these things. And how do you do that two years sooner and cheaper than we would be able to do it? You know, if it comes back and says, we're not delaying very long and here's all the answers, that might be great. But I'm not going, we have a plan. We have a plan for which we have an environmental assessment. I'm not throwing our plan out and I think the public needs to know, we're not throwing our plan out. We're going to test their plan against our plan. Because either we're standing behind our plan or we simply might as well move up the street and sit in the Queen's Park. We have a plan. We should defend our plan as much as we can. I know some councillors can't defend this plan, but this is a plan. So let's not pretend that we're just sitting down here dithering and that we have this idea and that idea and we haven't done anything on transit, my friends. We actually have a plan and a plan to fund part of it. We have funds for much of it. We have funds for SmartTrack. We have funds for line two. And we always knew the relief line was going to be paid by the province. So we have to comment on whether they're actually going to make that timeline. That is, we know is necessary and the public knows is necessary. So this should be a moment where we come together, let the public know we have a plan and test anything the province is doing against that plan. And here in June, if there are unreasonable delays on all fronts, now what are we going to do? Now what are we going to do?
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'll start off by thanking a number of people. First and foremost, the mayor and his leadership. I also want to thank the premier with respect to his leadership on this file because that's extremely important. And then I want to thank the city manager. And probably my thanks to the city managers, probably it brings it all together. Brings the city's plan and the mayor's leadership, the premier's plan and his leadership to the table where the city manager and our strong team of transit experts are actually at that table with Mr. Lindsay and others to discuss, to look at, as councillor Fletcher said, testing our plan against their plan, whether or not we augment it, to add and so on, resources we've been told are allocated that are going to come to assist us and so on. So normally, we shout at each other. Now there's an opportunity for us to talk with each other. And I think people want to see that. Clearly, as someone who is from Scarborough and had been articulating for quite some time about expanding the Bluer-Danforth subway system into the heart of Scarborough, I'm very much for that. And I'm, yes, I support the three stops. If it was only one stop we were going to get, then I support that as well. And let me speak to something that was said by the mayor yesterday. He talked about development that's actually going to take place, Madam Speaker. There's a lot of it that's being planned. Not just the Scarborough Town Centre, the Oxford property, but also the other land developers who we've actually had meetings with over the last month have simply now come forward with plans to develop their lands. You know the reason why, Speaker? Because there's going to be a subway into the heart of what is our downtown that's never been developed in a very long period of time. The last time a commercial development took place in the Scarborough Centre area was Consilium, which is, I think, was in the early 1990s or mid 90s. There hasn't been that. And so in addition to that, and councillor Karagianis talks about the 20,000 doors, it's more than just 20,000 doors in Scarborough Centre. There's new parks, there's new roadways, new design. Macauan Road is going to be redone because of this new development. And we are taking into consideration all the impact on the people that a development will take place because we know that that is a problem. Let me just turn my attention to councillor Matlow for a moment. And I love councillor Matlow. He is an amazing guy. I've had a great working relationship for a very long period of time and I will continue doing that. But I can't agree with respect to his assessment on transit for Scarborough, particularly as it relates to, I think, number three in his motion about just extending the, the line, I know councillor McKelvey spoke about that, deleting the word Malvern Town Centre. The folks in Malvern have suffered for such a long time with the lack thereof of good transit. It does take them two hours plus to get to any place, I guess, west of Young Street from Scarborough. And we certainly want to ensure that they're treated in a way that helps them with respect to their transit destiny. So we can look at the glass as being half-full or...
Okay, I think that we...
Sure, no problem.
Councillor Matlow?
I stand at a point of privilege. By the way, I, I think councillor Thompson's comments were said in a very respectful tone, so I'm not objecting to his tone. But, but it's been twice said now that, and this is an impact on my reputation and that's why I stand, that in some way, my motion, in some way, has any adverse effect on the residents of Malvern. In fact, if one were to actually read my motion rather than just create rhetoric around it, you will see that what my motion does is it, rather than extending the Eglington East to Malvern, it extends the seven-stop LRT.
But councillor Matlow, that's not a point of personal...
Well, it is because the characterization, Madam Speaker, the characterization is that somehow my motion has, is taking transit away from Malvern. Both councillors have, have, have just said that. And that's just the opposite of the truth. My motion actually not only connects Malvern to the transit, the rapid transit network, but it does it faster with the seven-stop rather than...
Councillor, that's not a point of personal privilege. Thank you.
So, well, just...
No, I'm sorry, councillor Matlow. Councillor Thompson, would you like to continue? Mayor Torry?
I'd suggest we could look into that one at the same time as we look into the suggestion on Twitter yesterday that advice offered from TTC and city staff was dishonest. We perhaps could take them together and look into them both. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Okay, councillor Thompson, you'd like to continue?
Yes, yes, Speaker. So I'm very pleased with respect to the direction that we're going in and particularly that table where we're going to be able to bring our plans forward to compare that and contrast that with that is being proposed by the province. Clearly, this is an opportunity for us to be able to address the needs of transit that is certainly lacking in this city that's been, people have been asking for for quite some time. But finally, you have a premier who is interested in talking with the city. There's a table where we're at. We bring our expertise, Madam Speaker. So we will continue to defend the interests of the residents of Scarborough as well as our collaboration with the interests of all, you know, opportunity for transit. I will say this, Speaker. It was I who moved the motion to bring the DRL line that was actually not in the 25-year plan or the 10-year horizon plan for MetroLinks. And there are people now today in this council who are very supportive of it who did not support it when I moved it back then. And that was from someone from Scarborough. So we were looking at the interests of everyone in terms of transit. So I'm supportive of providing the mayor with the direction that he needs to deal with the province. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Okay, our first motion is motion number two. We can put it on the screen. Sorry, we're finished. Councillor Perutza, that was the end of speaker, sorry. You, you didn't have your name up there. Motion number two. Okay, recorded vote. Well, you put it up after when we started voting. Well, you've been sitting here. You could have put your name up. No.
And, Madam Speaker, have the other items separated? Not, not this, but the, the recommendations from, from committee and...
Well, when you want to separate...
Councillor Perutza, your vote, please.
No. If members, if members of council want to speak on an item, they should put their name up, like, you know, on the list.
Councillor Carroll, councillor Perutza, please.
Been here for quite a few years. Even I support you usually.
Councillor Bradford, please.
Councillor Carroll, councillor Perutza, please.
The motion does not carry. The vote is eight to 18.
Recorded vote.
The motion carries 22 to 4.
Motion 1A. As amended. Recorded vote. Yeah, but I told you, I told you you need to tell me before we start taking the vote, not in the middle of the vote.
No.
No, you didn't.
Councillor Perutza, please.
I said you, when we get to the motion, let me know in advance.
Councillor Perutza, please.
Councillor Bradford, please.
But he didn't tell me which one.
I told you, I said not mine, but the other items. He doesn't care about my vote.
The motion carries 23 to 3.
Okay, and next, next motion?
I, I, I feel often in a position that I have to do this, but I need to just say at a point of privilege that because these votes matter, right? They're important. I had asked the speaker before the votes to parcel out these items so I could vote for some, vote against it all. I had to vote against the whole thing because I didn't have that opportunity by the speaker. And I, and I regret that.
Okay, councillor Matlow, when you got up before we started voting, you indicated that you wanted some of the motions split up. I said, fine, when we get the mo, when we get to the motion before we start voting, tell me which motion. And you did not tell me that. I'm sorry.
Just to be clear, I did. But I said it's not my motion, but all the recommendations from the committee and from the city.
Okay, our next motion, if you can put it on the screen. 3A. Recorded vote.
The motion carries 25 to 1.
Motion 3B.
All or nothing, sir. With that, you now...
You want to put a cherry? But all, but all or nothing. No, you can't get the beat out. You have to...
What's this at?
All right, you should be talking about the...
He's right beside you.
So...
Today's not the day to talk about the actual elections after the last...
Councillor Perutza, please.
Councillor Fletcher, please.
The motion carries unanimously 26 in favor.
Motion four. So councillor Matlow, we're at the committee report. How do you want it split up? I'm asking you now.
Could you, could you tell me which one is...
See, councillor Matlow, it's not, it's very difficult. All right, so... All right, so, what we can do is in the executive committee report, if I can have everyone please listen. Council Fletcher, Council Pasternak. So we're going to have, in the, in the executive report, one A will be voted on separately, so let's vote on one A. It's highlighted on the screen. Recorded vote.
Council Perutza, please. Council.
The recommendation one A carries twenty-two to four.
Okay, item as amended, recorded vote. The balance, yeah. Recorded vote.
Council Bylaw, please.
Council Perutza, please.
The balance of the item as amended carries twenty-five to one.
Okay. While was, who knows, who knows? Who knows, like, anyway, so our next item, timed item, is on page three. PH 4.1, Don Mills Crossing Final Report. Council Robinson held the item down, and can we remove, there's a na, Council Caragiannis, what is your name up there for? Okay, Council Robinson, you have questions? It was a timed item.
No, I don't think I have any questions.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Okay, Council Robinson, do you want to speak?
Yes, madam, I actually have a motion. So we, we discussed this item at Planning and Housing Committee. I moved this motion on behalf of some of the members of the cycling community in that area, or a motion similar to this. Staff have since met with me and said that maybe the motion that was moved was not ideal from a technical standpoint, so this corrects that, makes it a little more open-ended. And so I'm moving that, and that's really it.
Okay.
This is really staff's.
So why was.
Yeah, and it's staff's, it's staff's, it's staff's idea to just alter the wording a bit here from what was moved at committee.
So why was it a timed item? Oh, okay, so that's it? Okay, so you have your amendment. Deputy Mayor Minin Wong, did you have a question to Council Robinson?
Yes, would the council be accepted as a friendly amendment to add also in consultation with the local councillor?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Minin Wong to speak.
I, sorry, did the clerk, did the clerk's office, you can add that? Very nimble the clerk's office is. I have an amendment.
Okay.
So, the amendment makes the motion, the recommendation number eight reads, "City Council Request, the Chief Planner/Executive Director of City Planning to review the opportunity to incorporate a food bank and/or community kitchen in the multipurpose, nonprofit community space." I only change that within the context of a committee. Council Robinson moved a motion identifying one particular group to have control over this, the city property, and I don't believe one particular group. There's actually widespread need and interest in this, so I've basically made it more agnostic, not, not favoring one group over another group. That's all. And otherwise, I support the report.
Okay. Okay, Council Robinson.
So would you consider it a friendly amendment to say, also to include the Community Share Food Bank in the, in the mix? Because they are a member agency of the North York Harvest and Second Harvest Agency. They've been in place since 2004. They're one of the biggest food banks in Toronto, quite frankly, but they, they work very quietly behind the scenes. So would you be willing to say, including the community food, the Community Share Food Bank, including them as one of the potential agencies to be involved in this?
So, Madam Chair, what I would say is this. We're kind of getting into the weeds on something that's a secondary plan, which is supposed to be more of a, you know, a thirty-five thousand-foot document. It's not supposed to get into this level of minutia, number one, although, you know, the motion was moved at committee and, and the councillor chair, Bylaw, accepted that. Number two, the other reason why I wouldn't accept it is I think we need to keep it sort of neutral because, you know, there are a lot of groups in Flemington that want to use this, and I would like to add them as well, and I don't want to favor one group over another group. I just don't think it's, that's right and proper. And as the local councillor for this area, I think we should just leave it, we should just keep it not mentioning any particular group. So no, I wouldn't accept that.
Yeah, I guess I would ask you, are you aware that this food bank's in the, functioning out of the basement of a church in which the church has limited, limited lifespan? So really, they need some type of long-term, well, really, short-term plan on how to continue to function to serve families in the Don Mills community and beyond?
Yes, so I met with the group, I'm aware of their concerns. I'm also, I've also met with other community groups in Flemington and Don Mills, and I'm aware of that. I'm, I think we share the common interest of trying to incorporate this. This is, in some ways, a discussion that should be, take place in another forum, perhaps when this comes to the executive committee or it comes to the Parks and Recreation Committee. We're not, so the, the existing plan does not really include that right now for the Don Mills, the Celestica Community Center. In fact, Madam Chair, we haven't even decided yet on the particular site, and now we're deciding which groups are going to use it. So I would say to members of council, it's exceedingly premature to be dealing with this level of detail at this particular time when that decision has not even been made yet, and this, it hasn't been even presented to this council.
Thank you. Okay. Last speaker, Council Carroll.
Yes, Madam Speaker, it's awkward to go after the local councillor on this, but I just, I just wanted to shed a little light on, on this because many of us are, where we have large-site applications, trying to incorporate kitchens of a grade such that they could be used in a sort of a community kitchen capacity, in a food bank capacity. What we've just gone through in the Park by Forest Community Recreation Centre, where we built a full, commercial-grade kitchen, is the, the extremely complicated process of qualifying a group to make, to make sure that they have the capacity to be using these kitchens and leave no liability for our own corporations. It may well turn out that exactly the, the group that Council Robinson hopes will, will get this, will get this. With a partner like North York Harvest, it's likely. But I think it's important to note that recreation has a very robust process to make sure that as they go in, they are safe, their users are safe, and that there is a fair usage of that kitchen by this group and others, by being able to go through that process once the kitchen exists. And so I just wanted to reinforce what Council Minin Wong has said, that really, if we want to make sure that all of these kitchens don't leave us with difficult anomalies throughout the system as we begin to build more and more of them through development, that it's really best to leave that process with recreation and social development staff. And, and then we, you know, if we have a passion for a group and we know that group has a need, at that time, we can advocate for them and help them have that capacity to get through the process. So I'll be supportive of Council Minin Wong's motion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's put the motions on the screen. Okay. On favor, carried. Recorded vote.
Council Leighton, please, and thank you. Council Thompson.
The amendment carries unanimously twenty-four in favor.
Okay, the next, the next motion. On favor. Recorded vote.
Council Bradford, Council Matlow, please.
Council Perutza, please.
The amendment carries twenty-two to two.
Item as amended, on favor, carried. Okay, thank you. Council Carroll, can you come up? So we're going to go back to our item for speakers on page three, EC 3.6, the noise bylaw review. If we can put the speakers list on the screen. That's our next item. We completed the questions, we're just going into speakers now, okay?
Counselor Cressy, you held the item, so you're first.
Thank you, Speaker, and I'll begin by placing a motion, if clerks can put it on the screen. And I'll, I'll speak briefly to the motion and then broaden the comments. The second part of the motion is very self-explanatory. Under the current bylaws, the city follows the provincial guidelines for air conditioners and the decibel limit. We can't implement and look at our own, and so this is a request to the province to let us look at that. The, this, the first part is the more significant one, so let me explain it. Prior to the updated noise bylaw that's in front of us here, there was what's called a general prohibition on noise except when there was construction or a permit. And so what that meant in effect was that any time you could hear noise, that it was not allowed. Now, staff have brought forward an update to that, which is to allow non-construction noise at certain hours up to a certain decibel point. And the reason they've done that is, first of all, to acknowledge that there is some noise in the city, but more importantly, I think, to provide a tool to monitor and enforce it. So what is this motion? Is, instead of having a general prohibition, we now have something called unreasonable and persistent noise. But let me give you an example of unreasonable and persistent noise that, that currently would be allowed based on the decibel limit. Say you live in a row house, or a, or a semi, or a condo, and say your neighbor plays electronic dance music with a bass from morning till night. That electronic dance music with a bass may not surpass the decibel limit, so it may be allowed, but it would be unreasonable and persistent to wake up every single day and have electronic dance music coming through your condo, your apartment, your house, wherever. And this is something, if you live next to Councilor Bradford, you already have to put up with this every day because he plays electronic dance music morning till night, I know. But seriously, what this does, the motion, is to give staff direction to, to, at their discretion, decide. Kenny Rogers, that's right. You got to know when to hold them. But it gives staff the discretion to say, that noise may be allowed under the decibel limit, but it is unreasonable and persistent, and it is to strengthen that bylaw, to give them that direction. So that's what that is. Now let me broaden my comments at a much broader level. For years and years and years, our staff in MLS and in public health have been working around the noise bylaw. And our residents, and I can tell you in downtown, have been very active in this conversation. And active because, on the one hand, this is a quality of life issue, and it is also a public health issue, but it is as complex as it gets, and I think the questions we had demonstrated that. There is noise from construction, nightlife vehicles, leaf blowers and ACs, from dogs. And so from a downtown point of view, downtown has been designed as a mixed-use neighborhood. So it is not an entertainment district where you should expect noise 24 hours a day, nor is it a sleepy hollow devoid of any sound. There is a balance there that needs to be struck. And the existing system does not work. The existing system does not allow for proper monitoring, and certainly not for proper enforcement. And so in our attempt to find a balance and to update our noise bylaw, we haven't got it perfect, I don't believe we ever will. But we are trying to strengthen the monitoring and enforcement level while recognizing that balance of the city. And my motion here, very clearly, is to, while we are removing the general prohibition, it is to give staff the direction and the capacity to still tackle unreasonable and persistent noise when it is necessary. And so with that, I will conclude my remarks by thanking our city staff for years and years and years of work, and a lot of meetings with my office on this, but also the many members of the public, stakeholders from various industries, but really residents in my community in downtown who have been working tirelessly on this for three years. And with that, I'll conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Cressy. Council Cressy, I have a question for you from Council Pasternak.
Sure.
Thank you, thank you, Deputy Speaker, through you. Could this, could your motion result in the yanking of window-mounted air conditioners from TCH buildings?
No.
You're sure?
Yes.
That was, that was suitably brief. Thank you, Council Pasternak. That's the only question I have for you, Council Cressy. Councilor Matlow, you are next.
Thank you, I have a, I'm motion to defer the item for two cycles, and I'll explain to you why, why I'm proposing this. After I first thank my colleagues, Council Cressy and Leighton, Wong Tam, when she was right in the middle of it all, and others who have been involved in this discussion. This, this, I also want to, by the way, thank staff who, you know, along with Tracy Cook before him, and Carlton Grant, and Mark, and everybody as part of the MLS team, they do an amazing job, and, you know, they work with, I think, far too little at times to do so much. The expectations on them are boundless. We keep adding expectations onto them, and they really do a good job with what they can. But as I said in my, or I alluded to in my questioning yesterday, every time a resident of, of any of your wards call 311 with a complaint. they are told that within five days, somebody is going to be able to come and investigate. In this case, I'm speaking to a construction noise complaint, for example. And by the time that somebody can come by in those cases, the problem wasn't addressed when it needed to be addressed, within a timely manner. And also, there was no way to be able to get the kind of evidence that one would need to successfully prosecute. This is a challenge for residents because they have expectations that we have a noise bylaw and therefore it should be enforced. And it's a challenge for our staff because they in no way, as Carlton said yesterday, can respond to every single complaint that comes in through 311. You know, and they have to triage based on what they can address and what they can't. So, we're hearing from the Toronto Noise Coalition, for example, where they say, you know, a lot of good work's been done, there has been progress, but there are some specific issues that have not been addressed. In other words, this is baking, but it's not ready to come out of the oven. And these are some of the most engaged people in this conversation. And if we're trying to get to the finish line with them, then let's do it with them, rather than leave them feeling like this isn't a good package. What I'm very clear about is that it should be no more than two months. In other words, they're saying specifically, two months to really just get this right. And then no matter what, with, after two months, whatever happens, something needs to move on, and I get that. Pragmatically, rationally, we need some bylaw in effect that's an improvement. What I'm concerned about, though, is that if we haven't also completed most of the hiring, we don't have enforcement, again, as I said yesterday, the other side of the coin in place, and we're going to be setting up new expectations, then, you know, we need to be realistic about what we can even address. I actually think that there's, if I had it my way, there'd be many, many other reforms I'd like to see in this package, too. So, over the next two months, hopefully, we can address their concerns. We also heard, by the way, and this isn't something that I support necessarily, but we heard from the Toronto Region, the Toronto Region Board of Trade, even they've expressed concerns, I think Counselor Thompson raised it yesterday, about councilor's ability to intervene with noise bylaw exemptions with respect to concrete pours. And, you know, they're expressing their concerns, too. Let's get them back to the table, too. You know, maybe there's another way to address the need for concrete not to be stopped as concrete is being poured, because I get it, it hardens. But also to make sure that there's a mitigation plan in place, no matter what, maybe even initially through the zoning. I don't know what that answer is, but let's discuss that. Point being, this is almost ready to come out of the oven, it's not quite ready to come out of the oven. And what I'm urging you to do, especially those of us who kind of deal, I mean, I deal with noise bylaw complaints all the time. I can't tell you, I don't remember a Saturday morning that I've woken up that without a tweet or an email at me saying, you know, some contractor thought it would be a great idea at 5:00 in the morning to start, you know, hammering away. Most of us have experienced that, experienced that if you represent the downtown or midtown areas, along with other areas of our city where there's construction. So, two more months, that's the request from our communities. Let's nail this down one way or another, and then move on. What I'm concerned about is that if we don't allow this, what we're going to end up is with a revised bylaw and a bunch of unhappy people, who are the very people who are actually trying to kind of bring us forward with, rather than leave behind. And I think a lot of people are going to feel that way if we don't do this with them. So, two months, and then we get going. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a question for you, Counselor Carroll.
Yes, I'm just, when you say two months, you know, you're saying two meeting cycles, and with the best of intentions, you know how that sometimes sort of gets punted along. Are you not concerned that that now takes us into the busy construction season and the busy party season with the status quo, which is, people are not happy with now?
What I'm, the reason that I kept going back to the enforcement side is that no matter if we move things by two hours, or this, or that, I'm actually not convinced that even with the bylaw reforms that will actually, on the ground, like in real-life experience, feel much change if the complaints are not addressed within a reasonable timeframe. And I think one of the reasons for my request for the two months, along with responding to Cathy McDonald and the Toronto Noise Coalition, is also, at our last, and thank you for asking, because I wanted to mention this. During our last licensing committee meeting, I asked the very same question about where they're at with hiring. And what staff said is actually, really soon, they're going to be in a place where they're going to be forced up more, they're going to have more staff, they're going to, they've actually got announcements to come, where they're going to be able to do things in a different way that could make our communities a lot happier. And I think if this comes forward in the same way, at the same time, it'll be a better delivery. So that's what I'm hoping for.
Okay, I just want clarification here. So there's a deferral motion, and I see everybody's names up. Now,
Yeah, I was just, I thought I was starting the question.
No, so we're like debating the, like speaking on the deferral.
Yes, but what I'm doing is asking questions of the mover. I think people are confused about which column to be in.
Yeah, so Thompson, are you asking, are you So you're asking, asking questions, not speaking on the deferral? Okay, I just wanted to get it straight, because
That's in questions of staff column.
It's two minutes.
Seeing the other questioners, I suspect my next question will be asked by another councillor.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson, two minutes.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I have my name in the right column, not confused at all. So, through you, with respect to your deferral, Counselor, the Noise Coalition and others have put forward a variety of concerns that they've had. Staff have, within the span of two weeks that we had agreed to, that they would be able to respond to them, responded to the concerns and questioned. What additional concerns have they brought to your attention that they need additional time to be addressed?
I'll just make a few
Please.
So, addressing
Because the staff is obviously taking notes as well.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they've brought up everything from how to meaningfully address motorcycle noise, replace the use of
Wasn't that addressed yesterday in the question?
Yeah, it was addressed in the questions, but I
Because it's the aftermarket modification.
By the way, and we'll see what happens with the votes and all that, but I just mean,
Sure, okay.
As delivery to council by this meeting, it was a result, right? Looking at the best ways to measure amplified noise. Looking for a clear definition as to, as to what at source means with the requirement for, the measurement for amplified sound. They want to look at retaining the regulation to allow measurement of the property line for amplified sound. There's a number of kind of specific, detailed issues.
But those were addressed during the consultation with staff, and as the best that they could. So I'm just wondering, in terms of getting to a resolution, how will we get there since they've already gone through those?
There's, I mean, as you know, there's a difference between addressed and resolved. And clearly, and staff will tell you this, too, not everything's been resolved. And their position has been crystal clear that they're sort of, they're at a point where they feel like they've gone as far as they can in the road, now it's time to just kind of, okay, do it, right? And I respect that. I mean, they've done an amazing job. They're really good at what they do. What we're hearing from residents at the table, though, is that, and again, you know how it is at a table, there's more than one voice, there's more than one perspective. What the residents are saying is that they actually would like to work on these specific issues because they're important to them. I'm not going to pretend to be an expert in amplified noise, so I'm not going to give you the answer. But they'd like to work on that.
Thank you. It's only two minutes. Counselor bylaw.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Speaker. Counselor, you are aware that staff have been working with different councillors and the communities for a few years now on this, correct?
Yeah, including myself and my community. They're great.
Yeah. I'm just wondering that if you would consider that if this is approved, that we continue to monitor this and work with the communities, because we know that these are very complex issues, and, you know, getting to 100% satisfaction all the time might not be possible, but acknowledging that we need to continue to work with the communities, but that we also need to move ahead with some sort of enforcement and bylaw. Would you agree with that?
I fully agree. All, the point of this motion is that what we are hearing from the most, some of the most engaged residents who have been at the table, that they're appreciative of the work that staff have done, they feel like they have made progress, that there are specific issues, some of which I addressed, referring to the letter from the Toronto Noise Coalition, that they would like to have, you know, rather than, you know, it approved today, a small window of additional time to see if they can resolve them. I can tell you, my position is clear, that this can't go on forever. I think that they've asked for two months, let's give them two months. If we can't arrive anywhere further in two months, then one thing or another will have to happen. But I don't think that anyone loses by saying, okay, we on, at least the staff's side of the table, are going to do everything possible within reason to resolve every single one of those outstanding items, with an understanding that after two months, if they aren't, then one thing or another has to happen.
But don't you feel that that process already took place? I feel from
No, I mean, yes, there was a long process with a lot of work put into it, but not this request. This request is for one last shot, two months, to be able to address and resolve these outstanding issues. And when you asked about, do I believe that the enforcement is a critical side of it?
Okay, that was it, just two minutes?
Yeah, yeah. I just, what I'm hearing from people like Cathy, from others as part of the coalition, is they also recognize that this can't go on forever. No one's saying that, like, no good work's been done. I mean, it's evident that it has.
Thank you, thank you.
If they just have one last shot, I think then they will be
Counselor Matlow, thank you.
Happy with whatever the result is.
Thank you. Counselor Holliday, two minutes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you to Counselor Matlow. What precisely are the things that you want to try to resolve? I did see the letter from the Toronto Noise Coalition. Is it exactly what they've asked council about? There's one, two, three, four, five specifics.
Yeah, they've listed their, I think very clearly, their points of contention, some of which, by the way, may be resolved in the matter of this meeting, some may not. What is, what they are being very clear about, though, is that they don't mean to hold it up any further than that, they just want to be able to resolve them.
So, would you not consider or agree that at some point, you actually need to try out what the proposals are of the staff in order to evaluate whether or not they've been successful and able to compare to some of the recommendations that the coalition have? For instance, I know one of the things that the coalition brought up was this notion of LEQ versus DBZ. And so we've got different standards that are proposed by our staff, and we wouldn't know if they're successful until we've had a chance to try them out.
So, the Toronto Noise Coalition, they actually came in with even a bigger ask, right? They wanted to go with the New York approach, which is far more vigorous, far more enforcement. And they've compromised on a number of points. They're not convinced that the direction that staff are going in is satisfactory. And what I'm doing, and you know, agree or disagree with me, is, you know, basically, in a representative democracy, what I'm doing is reflecting those concerns today. And I'm hearing it from Cathy, I'm hearing it from a number of members of the community that have been engaged in this discussion. And I just want to allow them that opportunity to come back to the table for one last chance.
Thank you, thank you. Two minutes. Counselor Perks on the deferral, two minutes.
Thank you, Speaker. It's my intention to oppose the deferral, and I encourage all of my colleagues to join me in that. While I want to acknowledge the very important work that the Toronto Noise Coalition and all their member organizations have done and will continue to do on this, I think it is time to fish or cut bait. We have, I can tell you that the entire time I have been an elected official, there have been efforts to fine-tune, tweak, amend, change, update, and sometimes tear it all up and start all over again to our noise bylaw. It's an enormously complex regulatory piece, it's enormously complex enforcement piece. It's also very difficult to communicate with constituents about what their rights are and how they apply in a given circumstance. We need to settle something, get it in place, and make improvements. For every communication I have had from a community group concerned about whether this final form of what we've got is perfect, I have 100 other communications from constituents who are suffering right now and need improvements. And I'm not going to delay those improvements. As to the suggestion that we can just put this off for two months and come back, no, you can't. The bylaw is complex, the monitoring is complex, the equipment you need is complex, the hiring is complex. If you put it off for two months and move one piece, everything else has to move, too, and we will lose a year. I'm not prepared to do that. The time to print the ticket and get a better noise bylaw in place is now.
Thank you. Counselor Pasternak on the deferral, two minutes.
Thank you, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I am against deferral. Staff have been working on this for years. The staff report in front of us stretches 31 pages. They did online surveys, they hosted various town halls. Between January and February of this year, they had five public consultations. They received over 300 written submissions. The bylaws were last comprehensively updated in 2010. They retained an acoustical engineering firm, a third-party opinion research firm, and a third-party participation firm. They have done the work, they have been comprehensive, and the people of Toronto wanted us to get on with the business of running the city and not delay, delay, delay. This is time to get this package done. It's not perfect, it can always come back for future amendments. But to delay, another important policy piece in front of us is setting a bad signal out to the people of Toronto that we are unable to govern and unable to make decisions. Staff have done remarkable work on this piece, it's time to support it.
Thank you. On the deferral, recorded vote.
Counselor bylaw, please.
The motion to defer does not carry, the vote is seven to 15.
Okay, yes, just a sec. Counselor Kergeyanis.
Madam Chair, on a point of order, I rise to introduce a, two classrooms from my area, St. Sylvester School. They've been here beyond the classroom, and they're accompanied by Mr. Fernandez, the principal, Ms. Ironside, which is a grade two, three teacher, Ms. Severino, which is grade three and four, and we do also have a parent, Mrs. Mandaka. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you. Counselor bylaw to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I do have a motion that I'd like to put on the screen, if possible. And I'd like to start by thanking staff and many of my colleagues and their offices that have been for many years now, working on the noise bylaw. I think, as you will see, there's small amendments coming, and I think that there's a point that was made with the possible deferral, is that this is a complex issue, and that we always need to continue working with our communities on this to make sure that we're improving the quality of life for everybody. But on this issue of continuous concrete pouring, I wanted to bring your attention that we have a real tough balance to attain in here. We have, I think, the last number that I saw was 104 cranes up in the area in the city of Toronto. It's more than New York, Chicago, and LA put together. There's a lot of construction, which is good. You know, our city's growing, jobs are out there. We need to build homes for these people, but obviously, sometimes this becomes inconvenient for a lot of people. And this is the balance that we need to get in here. It's the balance between making sure that we're building the homes that we so desperately need in the city and making sure that we are respecting the neighbors that live beside what today is a construction site, but tomorrow's going to be somebody's home, is going to be somebody's house. And I think that's And I think that's what I'm trying to get in here, because like in any other industry, we have good operators and we have not-so-good operators. So the ones that are really good, they're doing the best they can to accommodate, you know, really tough construction sites, are the ones that's not so good. And that's what we're trying to do in here, is to bring those two parts together. And finally, you know, for, I think, the first time since I've been a councillor, you know, we all bring a lot of experience and conversations we have at the dinner table. I'm able to bring my experience and conversations at the dinner table because this is what my dad do for a living. He was a cement finisher. So there's no better person, I think, in this council chamber that understands everything and anything about cement finishing than I. And I know that very often, he would have to call us saying, you know what, don't expect me at night because there's cement pouring and we have to finish the work. So not that he really enjoyed it, not that he boss enjoyed paying a time and a half to finish the work, but they had to do it because there's a big truck, a big load of expensive cement outside that needs to get finished. So what we're trying to do in here is create a process where some noise mitigation is going to be accommodated, but that this work can, when in extenuating circumstances needs to happen, that it happens with the acknowledgement, with the conscious effort to mitigate the issues with the community. So I ask for your support. And Madam Speaker, I ask that we get some silence in the chambers as well. Thank you. And so I ask for the support of my colleagues for this. I think that we need to fine tune what staff has proposed, and I think that with my motion we'll be able to get that balance so much needed.
Thank you. We do have a question by Councilor Philly in three minutes.
Thank you. Councilor Bylaw, could you go through each component and elaborate on what you're changing from the staff recommendations and what's the effect of what you're changing it to?
Yes, I don't have a copy, so I'll ask staff to put the motion on the screen. So we are removing the definition of continuous pouring concrete and large crane work, so to allow a process to be created to have these exemptions. So we're, right now, we have a blanket exemption. We're getting rid of that blanket exemption and saying that there's a process that is going to be created to have that exemption.
But what would, I don't, what would the process be?
So that's coming in the next point.
Okay, thank you.
So the other thing is that staff had recommended that every three months, they would need to come in and apply for that permit. Well, we know that construction lasts sometimes more than three months, and that it is appropriate that they come with a plan if they want it for one year, that they can, if so wished, to present the plan for six months, eight months, one year. The number three is actually what is required to have that exemption. If you can scroll up a bit, so we can actually see the points under number three. So we will need to have this notice of exemption permit installed. So most of this was already in the report, we're just emphasizing here in the motion. So these are conditions that staff had recommended already.
So if you have a-
With the exception, I think, with the 120 meters, that we actually, I worked with some other colleagues on this, and these are things that we added. The notice for residents within 120 meters, that was actually not recommended in the report, we added that.
So the residents are notified, but, and I'll pick a real example, where concrete work or crane work is being proposed on a Friday afternoon of a Jewish holiday as people are gathering for dinner. And in the past, I've been able to say, yes, you can do the work, but you cannot do it at that time.
And staff will be able to do that. So they'll have to give the plan and what mitigations and what they're doing, and it has to be approved by our staff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have a motion.
Thanks, here.
And it is a motion for a report in the future. I hope that this is not a contentious ask, but it is asking to have a follow-up in a year's time, so Q4 of 2020. And I'll take note, the reason why it's Q4 is so that we can go through a summer period where our MLS staff are fully operational with this new bylaw and out in the field and just see how it goes. I've just added a list of things that I could seem to predict might be items of interest. I'll put it to councillors, if you've got any other ideas, you know, make them known. And I've left it open for any additional reporting. But I'll take note, this is a, this is a big deal, this change. Everyone knows in this chamber, either through their personal experiences as a citizen of the city or in their role as a member of council, that noise is a sensitive matter. It is often complex, and it is often something that is extremely difficult to resolve. I believe that the report coming forward adds new tools to the tool set that MLS has to try and get these matters fixed. What I would really like to see is how they work. And I am optimistic, a lot of work has been done on this, having new measurement technologies and things to try to quantify and deal with a matter on the spot, I think will go a long way, because we've all lived through that, where residents have been asked to gather tons and tons of evidence on a noise log to see if we can figure out what it is and go before JP and explain why there's an impact. At least now, we can say, you know, you're above or below the threshold and it's much clearer. And if that doesn't work, there's still some processes under the new bylaw to try and resolve matters that are even more complex in nature. But I want to see how that works. And one particular thing I want to look at closely is, you know, what happens with music in a neighborhood? Before, there were general provisions that basically said you can't play music late at night, but very difficult to enforce. In our case, we're now going to have a sound test on that, but I still want to understand if that was adequate, because if it's a really quiet neighborhood, is that enough to deal with the matter? So the report back would come at the end of next year, and I hope members of council see this as a suitable way to deal with the matters maybe that Councilor Matlow raised in his request to defer. He wanted to work on this some more. I think at some point, we should get on with the changes, see how they went, and if there's anything that needs to be dealt with in a year's time, we will deal with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Philly.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have an amendment. The City Council amend Part 43.1 of Economic and Community Development Committee Recommendation 1 by adding the words "except for non-emergency work conducted by the City of Toronto and its agencies or corporations between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 PM," so that it now reads as follows. "Government work except for non-emergency work conducted by the City of Toronto and its agencies or corporations between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM." So this is, hopefully, a very small amendment to simply say we should not be giving ourselves a blanket exemption to create noise overnight that would literally keep people awake all night. So for emergency work, sure, you have to go in and do the work whenever you can. At other times, we should be certainly, if at all possible, doing the work so that it does not keep people awake. The whole purpose of this exercise, I had hoped, was to reduce the noise that our residents are subjected to. The single biggest source of noise in the area that I represent, and probably the same elsewhere in the city, is work done by the City of Toronto, not work done by the development industry. So, for example, every time a condo is built, there are utility cuts across Young Street, and those have to be repaired. Those are now repaired by the City of Toronto. Young Street is being dug up pretty well perpetually. There's always somebody doing some kind of digging. And now, with the current regulations where the City of Toronto was not exempt, the staff have to come in and ask for an exemption, and that provides an opportunity to have a discussion about, you know, what's the level of noise, how can we schedule this in a way so that we, yes, get it done faster, yes, don't add to the cost, yes, do not disrupt traffic more than necessary, but also do not keep people awake at night more than is necessary. So we really shouldn't be doing a do-as-we, say-not-as-we-do here, and the City of Toronto should not be giving itself an exemption to keep people awake all night. There may be situations where work can be done without keeping people awake, but we should only do that where absolutely necessary. Ironically, this situation occurs most where you have the most people living along a major street, because the, for example, in Willadale, there would be easily 50,000 people living right along Young Street, and that's, and it's largely due to that population increase and all the various construction activity that we are continually digging up the street and doing more city work. So I think we really need to be sensitive to residents here and continue to allow ourselves to have those discussions with staff and not just find out when a notice is issued that, or when we get the complaints that people are being kept awake all night.
Thank you. We do have a question for you, Councilor Cressy. Clarification of the motion.
Thank you, Speaker. Could the motion be put on the screen as it hasn't been distributed yet? So, so I understand this, there is, under your motion, there is still the possibility for government work to take place after hours, but rather, there would need to be a process to permit it. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, first of all, if it's emergency work, the motion only applies to non-emergency work.
Okay.
If it's emergency work, obviously, it has to be done whatever the time is. If it's non-emergency work and staff are proposing that it be done between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, there would need to be a discussion about it.
So, and I think just to make sure I understand that, because I have the gardener in a big chunk of my ward where we deal with this a lot. So what you're saying is that if there was a desire to do non-emergency government work, there would need to be a process to look at that, rather than just assuming that it will take place overnight?
That's right. A conversation with the councillor is usually what's required. And in my experience, there's never any work that's not been done, it's just you come up with an alternate plan that meets everybody's needs.
Okay, that's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Pasternak, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. Could your motion stretch out the length of a construction project due to this, due to restricted hours?
Well, that hypothetical question, could that be possible in some rare instance? It's possible. Again, in my experience, it hasn't been. In fact, in, you know, one case very recently, having to do with Young Street, the project was reduced from 10 weeks to three to four weeks, and with a financial saving of $1 million. So it, you know, recently, and you would be aware of this, Councilor Pasternak, on Bathurst Street, there was discussions on how we can do the work that's planned there by Enbridge in a way that doesn't, doesn't slow down the project and doesn't keep people awake all night.
Right. But you're restricting the hours of construction, so that sends a signal to residents that the construction period will last longer.
Well, currently, currently, the city is not at all exempt from the noise bylaw period, except for emergency work. The staff are recommending removing that exemption, so that, so that if we adopt the staff recommendations, council will be giving the city the ability to, as of right, make whatever construction noise it wants, whatever it wants to make it. I don't think that's a reasonable thing for the city to be doing.
So theoretically, this motion could increase construction costs, because you're shrinking the ability to work, is that-
No, well, it's increasing the ability to work from what it is now. Currently, it is seven to seven is the, is the current bylaw. So this actually extends it three hours from what we have now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Wong Tam to speak.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I would like to move a motion, and that is to amend Councilor Bylaw's motion by simply adding the words "with overnight event and activity discouraged." So therefore, her motion now, asking for a noise mitigation strategy from the applicant, asking for the noise exemption, when they apply for that noise exemption, they would be discouraged from applying for overnight activity and any type of events. And that largely has, speaks to large crane work or perhaps overnight continuous pours. What we want to do is encourage the applicants to begin that work early in the day so that hopefully they can complete it before the evening. So I believe that's a friendly amendment, and I had the opportunity to consult with the councillor before moving that. I want to thank staff for this remarkable volume of work. I don't think that the report before us even began to summarize the amount of active listening and engagement that they had to undertake in order for them to lead this bylaw review. Toronto Municipal Code, Chapter 591, it's something that we speak about lots in our office, especially as a downtown office. And in 2013, I moved a motion asking for a review of this bylaw, recognizing that it had not been actively and broadly reviewed since 2012. What I did not anticipate, my staff did not anticipate, is that it would take three years until 2016, when the staff would be able to turn their heads to conducting the strategy for consultation and then, and then take underway the broad, deep analysis that was required. They had to get into some very technical things that they were not accustomed to doing. And I think that what's before us now, 17 years since the last time the bylaw, the noise bylaw was actively reviewed and majorly overhauled, we have a series of recommendations that gives us a lot more power. And the things that we have, and I should also thank my staff, former staff Sheila Pardo, who's actually now crossed the Atlantic Ocean, it was actually her original motion, she was dealing with motorcycle noise in the village of Yorkville, which is kind of what kicked it off. Then we started to get an avalanche of complaints around construction noise, especially for those operators that were beginning construction before 7:00 PM. And then Lorraine Hewitt from my office, who has been so patient and steadfast in monitoring the activity and responding to constituents within our community and then outside of our community, to make sure that people felt that they were actively heard and that their comments were well-received. Interestingly enough, I think it's important for us, Madam Speaker, for us to recognize what was not here in 2002. What was not in this bylaw in 2002 was the authority to request noise monitoring, which is now here. And 17 years later, in the 2019 bylaw, the new bylaw proposed before us is now the request for noise mitigation plans. These are things that we were, did not have the authority, and we did not pursue. We will now have those powers. We also have the powers to exempt permits. We've always been able to do that for some applications, but there was never the authority to do that more broadly. We are now able to proactively, proactively, Madam Speaker, mitigate noise. And where noise contravenes what is permitted, we will now see MLS increasing fines and penalty. So let's take a look at what those fines and penalties were in the old bylaw. In the old bylaw, if you contravened the noise bylaw, you would be given a fine of about $155 to $305, and this would be through proactive enforcement. Developers and those who violated the noise bylaw saw it as a cost of just doing business. They were going to tear it up, and the bylaw meant absolutely nothing to them. They were going to tear it up and the by law meant absolutely nothing to them, while the poor communities were asked through a very inefficient 3-1-1 system to document and write down in a paper log all the ways that this, this repeat offender was violating the noise by law. It was a system that was just broken and we didn't have the powers to enforce. The new noise by law, what's proposed before us today, will see fines of up to $100,000. I would think that the, the general contractor, the project manager on that, on that development site is going to think twice. And that means that they're going to hold their third-party contractors to greater account. This by law is as good as it's going to get, and I believe that we should be supporting it.
Thank you. Councillor Leighton?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I have a motion that I was asked to move that city council add a definition of living area to mean any area that includes the, that includes the premises of a dwelling or a workspace. My understanding is it's a technical amendment that was, was coming from staff. Yeah. So, I, just quickly, I'd like to thank staff. My vote in favor of, of a deferral was in no way a reflection, I hope it wasn't taken as a reflection, of a, a lack of, of confidence in what's being moved forward, but instead, an opportunity for us to kind of tie together and knit together the, the, the community of support. On the one hand, we're getting, we're getting concerns from some of the neighbors, the neighbors that have been working very strongly on this, and perhaps some of it was a misunderstanding about how, how staff came to certain conclusions. Perhaps some of it was just a difference of opinion. On the other hand, we've got industry and, and the development community saying, hey, wait a second, I don't think you fully appreciate and understand what, why and what a, some of, some of the exemptions meant for those communities and what would be added on to it. And so, I, I had hoped that through a deferral, we would be given some time to make sure that as the, the, these last revisions were made, that they were being done in a, in a more thoughtful process. Having said that, it's in front of us. I like the direction that staff have taken in this. There are some motions here, though, that I think are critical. One, I think councillor Cressy's motion helps bring us, at least in, in, in a very symbolic way, closer to what the community wants reflected in, in the noise by law. Councillor Bylaw's recommendation addresses some of the issues around the continuous pour, that both, both addresses the neighbors' concerns and at the same time, the, the concerns coming from industry. I think that's, that's critically important. Councillor Holliday's request for a report back. Councillor Philion's request, I think, will probably get mixed support on, on, on the council floor, though I think, having heard directly from councillor Cressy on the matter, he's, he, that he's struggled with, with work in a downtown neighborhood where the city isn't informing the, the local councillor or the community of work that, that they'll be undertaking. And I, I do believe we have this, that same responsibility, at least, in, in, in theory, if not, or, or we should be in practice, even if it's not written in and that motion doesn't pass, there's still an opportunity for the city divisions to engage local councillors in the community prior to their work, as we're doing right now on Macall, which anyone that lives west and drives will see, there's a pretty significant amount of work going on in Dundas and Macall, and that will be going all night, right in front of residential, the residential community. None of that was, they didn't seek approval from the city of, from the local councillor, and they certainly would have got it because the work needs to be done. But then the final motion from councillor Wong-Tam, I think, adds some clarification that, that's needed. Look, every year at budget time, I ask one question of the head of municipal licensing and standards, and that is, do you have the necessary resources to enforce your bylaws? Year after year, we've gotten, well, we're going to restructure, we think we could do it, we don't, like, look, at the core of this, what residents want to see, they don't care about the paper it's written on, they barely, and my apologies, they barely care about the by law the way it's written, and the new by law or old by law. What they want is enforcement. What they want is the city to actually be there when they call, or at least show up at some point shortly after or in the days following, when it can't be something that's captured 12 to 14 hours later. They want a path so they can get it addressed. Because too often, we've got, we've, we've got establishments, mostly bars or clubs, that won't follow the noise by law. Very basically, they won't shut their doors. And we don't have the resources to send people out all the time and check on them. We've got construction sites, and I took over after councillor Wong-Tam in, in, in Yorkville, and it's constant, constant calls about late-night construction noise. And it's not because it's, it's just late-night noise, and it's not that they shouldn't have any, like, that we can say, oh, you live in a downtown area. No, this is incredibly loud construction noise happening at very close proximity to other residential condominium developments that we have approved.
Thank you, councillor.
And so, well, thank you. I was just getting going.
Councillor Pasternak?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, I think there's general agreement that, among Torontonians, that unwanted noise is a drag. But it also must be recognized that good things often come out of that noise, whether it be upgraded infrastructure, paved roads, fixed sidewalks, the building of new homes. And of course, as we intensify through development charges and section 37 agreements, we get new playgrounds, new parks, and of course, overall, you're getting increased property values in many neighborhoods. At the same time, we must make sure that we protect our neighborhoods, we respect our neighborhoods, but also we allow commerce to continue. I think, and councillor Bylaw's motion that allows for the continuous pouring of concrete allows the construction industry to prosper, it allows them to get on with the business of building new homes, fixing our infrastructure, and at the same time, it allows them to finish their project quicker. We can put chains on these, on these construction companies and these projects, and it'll just stretch out the pain. The complaints will go for a longer period of time, they will be more intense, there'll be increased aggravation as the project drags on. It's important to let construction companies get on with the work they're doing. Got a bit concerned about councillor Philion's motion as I read it, that projects will go on longer, they will be more expensive, and will tie the hands of the city. Overall, I'd like to thank staff for their work. As I mentioned earlier, they've been working on this for years, their staff report stretches 31 pages. They hired outside experts to get opinions from them. They met with hundreds of constituents, they hired consultants that looked at some of the science of, of noise by law, and I think they brought back a package that is worthy of support with, of course, a couple of amendments here. Once again, just to conclude, I would say that councillor Bylaw's is a crucial amendment to allow construction projects to get done quickly, efficiency, with the least cost and the least disruption in their local neighborhoods.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'm not going to move any motions, but I will comment on some a little bit later. I, first of all, want to thank the staff as a Chair of Economic and Community Development, and this matter came through our committee. We had lots of deputants who came to speak to this very important issue. Noise is a, you know, an important issue in the city. It's something that's very positive in, in, in instances and negative in other instances and so on. We actually derive great economic benefits from noise because we're a music city, so there's noise associated with that. I understand that there are other elements of noise where you can wear earplugs and/or headsets and so on where it doesn't make a lot of noise. I understand that as well. But we are working to expand the economic development opportunity and benefits. That being said, Speaker, there's no doubt that noise have a negative impact and a overall impact on areas of the community. And let me give you an example. In my ward, every year, there is an event that takes place at a particular bar establishment. It's called a duck-off. People go out, they cook outside, duck and so on, and they make lots of noise. It emanates all over the community, and we've done the measurements, and our by law right now isn't helpful to help us with that. This new proposed amendment to the, the by law will help us with that. I also draw your attention, Speaker, to the fact that the fines that are going to be incorporated in this new by law is much more significant, and I think people will actually start to pay attention, those who are having a dramatically negative impact on our community as a whole. I have gone through the list, Speaker, because number of emails that I've received when we were dealing with this particular issue, every single one of them, I've sent to staff for their comments, and they have addressed each one of them. I want to thank Mr. Grant, Mrs. Strega, and others who have done a lot of work, and the whole team that are sitting there in the, in the gallery over the last five years. I think that probably about six years before that, I'd gone to the, one of the meetings to deal with some of these issues at Metro Hall. It's very contentious at that point. At committee, what we just dealt with this matter a couple of weeks ago, gave staff the opportunity to work with community groups, as well as the construction trade organization Build and others, to deal with some of the issues, and the motion that councillor Bylaw has moved forward really addresses and helps that particular issue. I will be supporting councillor Bylaw's motion. I will be supporting councillor Holliday's motion, which is very helpful in collaboration with staff in order to review the by law itself and to report back in the fourth quarter in 2020. I will not be supporting motion five by councillor Philion. I believe that this particular motion will end up costing us as a city a lot more money. They had a situation where the mayor actually worked on the gardener and believed you did the overnight, reduce the construction time, reduce the amount of monies that this city would have had to pay. And I think that this particular motion is not very helpful to us. Clearly, we've heard from councillor Cressy and others and so on, when we actually, as a staff, especially doing city work, we always take into consideration the interests of the people that we're trying to help, which is the residents of Toronto. And emergency response and so on, I think is extremely important. I will be supporting and ask members to support the motion by councillor Wong-Tam. I think that's actually helpful. The motion by councillor, councillor Leighton, that staff has asked to, to move forward with on the workplace living area, I think that's fine. Madam Speaker, we've looked at New York, at the by law that they brought in with respect to noise, and we've looked at ours. Theirs is not perfect either, nor am I suggesting, or anyone at this point, that ours is perfect. But there's an opportunity for us to refine the by law. Councillor Holliday's motion speaks to that and will create that opportunity for us. So I ask you to support what's actually in front of us. And again, I want to thank the staff because they've spent a lot of time, it's probably next to the King Street pilot program, one of the most research initiative and initiative that we have actually undertaken with respect to dealing with the matter that's in front of us here at council. So this noise by law needs to be supported by staff and to ensure that the residents understand, we're always working to refine it. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you. Okay, our last speaker, Mayor Tory.
Well, Speaker, thank you very much. And I want to begin, I know it sounds repetitive to thank the staff, but I think when you even heard yesterday enumerated in response to questions about whether a deferral that we ended up dealing with today would be constructive or helpful, what you also heard was a recitation of the unbelievable process, unbelievable in the sense of how extensive it was that has preceded this day and this report in terms of public meetings and consultations of all kinds. And I think the other thing that was said very honestly by, by our staff yesterday was that, you know, no matter where we go with this, no matter what answer one chose here, or in the case of our professional staff, there were going to be some people who are not satisfied with it. And so, I think the, the best we can do is to try to come up with a balance, and I'm going to indicate some motions that I will be supporting that I think help us to achieve that balance even better than a report that I think went a long way to, to achieve a balance. And the reason I didn't support a deferral is simply because we were told yesterday in no uncertain terms by staff that this was really just not going to achieve anything in the context of trying to come up with better answers because they'd worked and worked and worked and worked. And I went to, as some in this room did, to one of the public consultations, and it was clear from that, as it often is in these meetings, that, you know, that there were different groups of people there, but there were some people who probably, no matter what we recommended, were never going to be satisfied. And so, that's fair enough, and that's why you have these meetings. I should just say that, so, so the motions that I will support, and I don't think I'm leaving any out here, are councillor Wong-Tam's, deputy mayor Bylaw's, councillor Leighton's, councillor Cressy's. I think these all make a useful contribution to a better regime. The one that I will not support, and it's for reasons alluded to by deputy mayor Thompson, is councillor Philion's. And I guess it is for this reason. I, first of all, I, I take considerable heart because I know it's true from what I heard councillor Leighton say, I believe, which is that in almost every case, in any event, there is an engagement as between city staff and the councillor that happens, and that the thoughts of councillors on these matters are taken into account. But I think the point made by councillor deputy mayor Thompson is also important, which is that I actually believe, from having talked to a lot of people, and you all do too in your local areas, that people on balance, not unanimously, because there is no such thing as unanimity on this thing, people on balance would rather we got the work done whenever we can sooner, within reason. You know, they're not saying, well, if it was going to be those, what do you call those jackhammers going all night, six or eight of them outside their door, they're probably not in favor of that, but other kinds of reasonable noise they're willing to put up with if it's for a shorter period of time, so that things get done faster, both so that the work can get done, so that the noise stops, and so they can get about their business. You know, if your street's torn up or, or something's going on in your neighborhood, you'd like it to be finished sooner than later. And I will say, because it was mentioned earlier by councillor deputy mayor Thompson, that the York Bay Young Ramp was an example of that. The people came up to me at the opening of the new ramp and said, well, on the one hand, we weren't happy about, I think, and mostly in that case, they were hearing the beeping of the trucks. That was the main thing that was carried up, amazing numbers of stories up into the air. But on the other hand, we didn't really, we, we made a few calls, some of us did, but on balance, we were quite prepared to accept it because we knew that by having the work happen over extended hours, it was going to get done sooner. And it wasn't so much because they even used the ramp, they just wanted it over with. And so, we've been very careful as a city. I will certainly take responsibility for being the person who came in here as mayor and said we should be using extended hours more often, and even 24 hours whenever possible, but that we try to do that in a pragmatic, considerate way, and it does involve discussion in many cases, if not all, with the local councillor. And there have been instances in which work being done, I recall one particular instance in the north end of the city where the local councillor said, no. And so, we didn't follow the extended hours. But I, I would just say that I think on balance, most people, most people would say, get it over with, spend a little more time, we'll put up with a little more noise for extended hours so that you can be out of our hair completely in a short period of time. So, I, again, want to say thank you to our professional public service for a job, I think, as well done as could possibly be expected. And I want to say that I look forward to supporting, of course, the staff, staff recommendations as modified by these motions, Wong-Tam, Bylaw, Leighton, Cressy, and I, but I will be voting against councillor Philion's for the reasons I've stated. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you. Okay, ready to vote?
The motion carries unanimously, 25 in favor.
Motion three. As amended?
The motion carries 21 to 4.
Recorded vote? Recorded vote.
Counselor Carroll, please.
Counselor Fletcher, please.
The motion does not carry. The vote is 8 to 17.
Motion one. Recorded vote.
Counselor Kair Jones, please.
Counselor Perutsa, please.
Motion number one carries unanimously, 25 in favor.
Motion four. Recorded vote.
Counselor Mallow, please.
Counselor Perutsa, please.
The motion carries unanimously, 25 in favor.
Motion seven, recorded vote.
Counselor Bylaw, please.
The motion carries unanimously, 25 in favor.
Item is amended, recorded vote.
Counselor Bylaw, please. Counselor Layton?
Counselor Perks, please. And Counselor Perutsa, please.
The item is amended, carries 23 to 2.
Okay. Okay, we have some motions we want to add. Okay, Counselor Pasternak? Counselor Pasternak?
Yes, thank you. Madam Speaker, I think it's on behalf of the mayor myself, I'd just like to introduce this, as this is an urgency of fast-moving events in Quebec, we're just, we want to make up, join Montreal in a public statement to support religious freedoms.
Thank you. On favor, carried. Counselor Bylaw, you have two.
Yes, Madam Speaker. This motion is for a memorandum, an MOU that will be signed May 1st, and because we don't have counsel before it, that's the reason of the urgency. And the other motion is a liquor license application.
Okay, so we'll vote on one first. On favor, carried. On the liquor license, on favor, carried. That's it? Counselor Robinson, we have a couple of minutes. Did you just want to release that item on page 3, PH 4.5? Committee of Adjustment?
Good, I do have three motions, so I'm not sure.
So not a quick item?
Yeah, I think maybe not.
Okay. Well, Counselor Robinson, do you want to try it so we can get rid of it? Counselor Robinson?
Sure, I can try. So Committee of Adjustment, as many people know, has increased dramatically, like 96% over the last eight years. And so what I'm asking for here is an end-to-end review of the Committee of Adjustment, and including in the public consultations, residents and associations. Number two is really looking at the time period, not overly accessible to residents when it's happening in the morning, so having staff review the timings of the hearings. And thirdly, just a simple request of getting it up on the website, other, T-Lab, et cetera, have these documents, et cetera, accessible to the public up on the website. We're still not quite there yet, so just a push to get staff to get that up and running. So...
Thank you. Counselor Bylaw, are you asking questions? Okay, then it's not a quick item. I wanted to release...
Not a quick item.
Yeah, yeah. It is, all right. So you'll have to, we'll have to wait till after lunch, then. You can ask the question. And Counselor Perks, did you want to ask a question as well? Yeah, okay, so after lunch. Okay. All right, recess to 2:00.